Hey, hey, welcome back. It is session thirteen of our twenty for 2020 Revelation Bible Study. We are super excited to be with you again tonight. Thank you so much for joining us. All of our sessions are on WhitestoneChurchTX.com and on our YouTube channel under the same name. And so if you've missed sessions one through twelve, or you want to re-study a couple of them or whatever, all of them are listed there in order on our YouTube channel, WhitestoneChurchTX. Tonight, we're gonna be in session thirteen, will be in chapter fourteen. And so we'll dive in and we're gonna pick up a little bit from where we left off last night in regard to the mark of the beast. And so we'll reread some of chapter thirteen. But I'm super excited that you're joining us. Listen, Revelation is a book of the Bible that the devil wants to deceive us and think and trick us and fool us in thinking that, hey, we're not smart enough to understand it. Or hey, there's too much allegory, too much metaphors and word pictures and, and you know, things that we can't understand. That's not true. The Bible says in Revelation, chapter one, verse one, it says, "The revelation of Jesus Christ." So the first five verses, or the first five words of this book tell us that God wants to reveal to us Jesus Christ. He wants to reveal to us Jesus, the Messiah, Jesus, the way, Jesus, the truth, Jesus, the life. And so the enemy, of course, doesn't want us to read it because he doesn't want us to see Jesus. He, he wants us to read Revelation to quote-unquote, "reveal the Antichrist," or reveal the one world government, or the mark of the beast. Those, those things will be revealed. But if we're reading Revelation to figure out those things, we're missing the point. We're to read the book to figure out Jesus. And so I want to just say thank you so much. It's an honor to be with you again tonight. So let's pray and we'll get started with session thirteen. So Father God, we love you. And God, I pray that you would just take our day, take all the things that we've had up until now, God, that you would fill us with your presence, your spirit, give us your strength, your energy, your, uh, just your peace. But God, open up your word to us. God, open up, reveal to us, open up your scripture, open up that thing which needs to direct us as we enter into this, uh, this Bible study and the end times. Jesus, we declare that you're returning. We know you're coming back soon. And so God, I just pray that you give us peace, give us wisdom and discernment. God, open our eyes where we're blind, unstop our ears where we're deaf. And God, give us a mouth to speak boldly for you in this time. In Jesus' name, and everybody said, amen. So last night, we left off in Revelation, chapter thirteen, with the mark of the beast. So I want to recap just a little bit because we had to kind of quit early because I was talking way too much. Revelation, chapter thirteen, listen to what it says in verse sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Chapter thirteen, verse sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And he, talking about this false prophet, "causes all, both small and great, rich and poor, free and slave." Small and great could be popular, unpopular. Uh, rich and poor, obviously, those who have a lot and those who don't have a lot. Free or slave would mean those who are, um, succumb to the pressures of the world and those who have not. Uh, in addition to slavery and free people. "To receive a mark on their right hand or on their foreheads, and that no one may be able to buy or sell except one who has the mark of the beast," or the mark, "or the name of the beast, or the number of his name." Listen, the Antichrist is going to rule with a strong hand. But this false prophet is the one who's going to encourage and enforce this mark or this worship of the first beast or the dragon. So when we talk about the mark of the beast, a lot of us know more about the mark of the beast than we do the seal of God. So I really want to challenge you to look at to the seal of God that he seals on the believer. The Holy Spirit brands believers, if you will. We're like cattle and he brands us when we give our life to the Lord. So that if we get outside of the fence, the enemy knows whose, whose we are. People know who's, who we belong to. The seal of God is more important to understand than even the mark of the beast. But here's why the mark of the beast gets so much traction. It's because we know that and we know that if people don't receive that, they won't be able to buy or sell. So Jesus talks to people in the realm of, hey, listen, you can't serve two masters. You can't serve God and Mammon, it says in the Gospels of the New Testament. When Jesus says, hey, listen, you can't serve Mammon, Mammon is a demon spirit of money. Behind the worship of money, behind the worship of material things, gold, silver, platinum, diamonds, rubies, houses, cars, clothes, you know, toys, iPhones versus Android, you know, all this, behind that worship of those things is a spirit called Mammon. It's a demon. And so when Jesus calls out that spirit, we need to pay attention. There's not a lot of times where Jesus calls out a demon name. But Mammon is a spirit. And so one of the reasons God wants us to tithe, tithing is a spiritual protection to the believer. It frees us from poverty, it frees us from the curse on our money. It also frees us from a Mammon spirit. When you honor God with the first tenth of your finances, you're not allowing greed to overtake you. You're not allowing Mammon to say, hey, put more trust in me than God. What we find here at the end time is that a lot of people will receive the mark of the beast because they fear money more than they fear God. The Bible says, hey, listen, if you'll fear me, if you'll trust in me, then I'll provide for you. If I provide for the sparrow, the, the, the littlest bird, if I provide for the bird, how much more valuable than you are you than that bird? I'll provide for you. Hey, listen, if I clothe the lilies of the field, how much more will I clothe you? If, 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 listen, if you're, if you're hungry, I'll feed you. If you're naked, I'll clothe you. If you're thirsty, I'll give you drink. So one of the problems of this end time spirit is a lot of people won't want to lose their money, but they'll be willing to lose their soul. And that tells you the price tag they put on each of those things. Esau in the Old Testament was a guy that put more value on food than his birthright. So in order to be fulfilled for a few minutes and having his stomach full, he gave up his birthright, his lineage. And so at the end times, this same thing happens. So people won't be able to buy or sell. Now, the enemy won't just put it out there like that, but a lot of pressure will be on you. Hey, listen, if you're gonna be a good parent, you're gonna let your kids starve, just take this mark. God wants you to love your family. God wants you to, to provide for your kids. Even the Bible even says, "provide for you." But the mark is more sinister than that. So if you look at verse seventeen, we talked a little bit about this last night, or a lot about this actually. It says, "No one may be able to buy or sell except one who has the mark or the name or the number." The mark there means brand. And that's really a clarification of the type of follower of the beast system. The mark of the beast will be the person that wants the brand, that is a charismatic follower, that I would call it. So they, they want to be identified with the beast. They want to be identified wearing his clothing, his, his jewelry, his, his name. They would, they want to be identified with him, so they mark themselves. The name of the beast is an affiliation. So there will be other people that won't be charismatic followers of the beast, that just, uh, oh, you know, they love this guy. There'll be other people that just want his name for affiliation circumstate, uh, sakes. So kind of like you may affiliate with the Republican Party, or you may affiliate with the Democratic Party, or you affiliate with the, your name, or, or with the name of the independent voter, if you will. So, so we affiliate, we have affiliations, but we're not sold out to them. We're not radical, you know, we're not, we're not branding ourselves with them. And the third type of follower, so that would kind of be like this, this mediocre follower that, yeah, you know, I identify with the beast because I want to, you know, gain monetarily, or I want to, you know, I just want to be considered a good citizen, or, you know, I just, I'm gonna side with this team versus that other team. The number of the beast is kind of like this third tier affiliation where people associate for business strategic purposes, strictly survival strategist. And so the number would indicate a lesser degree of, of, of honor or infatuation with the beast as, as the name would kind of be that middle tier and the mark would be those who are charismatic. I mean, they just love this guy or this system. And so we see three different levels. And it says at the end, "Here is wisdom, let he who has understanding calculate the number of the beast." Listen, God's telling you, you can figure it out. Now, there's a lot of, a lot of things that the six-six-six is the number of man, it's not the number of God. Six-six-six, for example, uh, there's a lot of numerology, a lot of codes out there. And I'm not saying they're wrong, but I do think it's a reference. So for example, in the Roman numerical, uh, alphabetical, or the Roman numerals, there's a numerical value assigned to each of those. If you take six of those seven, it adds up to six-six-six. Uh, my friend Gerald, you know, posted last night, uh, hey, I thought six-six-six was the mark of Nero and, 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 and those are all true things, that, that there were Roman Caesars that their names would add up to six-six-six. And so those are references and those are Antichrist types or shadows. Those are people that mimicked the Antichrist. But this Antichrist, so remember, the word of God, Revelation is a panoramic. It's looking backwards, it's looking where we're at today, and it's looking forward. So those are all correct. But this mark of the beast, this number of the beast, is going to be a system and a marking of following the Antichrist. So you will have to bow down to the Antichrist morals and ethics and values and religion and theology and ideology. You'll have to succumb to that to take this mark. So it will be a number, it will be a name, it will be a brand. It'll be all three. And when the Bible says that we'll put it on our foreheads, that can be a physical marking. There, there's legitimate, uh, that's very legitimate. But it also indicates that on our forehead is, it's in our mind. That is our mindset, that's our thinking. We think like the beast. We imagine like the beast. We, we want that, um, mindset. We, our values, our morals, our systems, our ethics, our, our religion, our, our, all of our ide, all the mind is, is represented in that forehead. So will it be a mark on your literal forehead? Yes. But it will also be an indication of what's already branded on the inside of your mind. So the forehead represents your mentality. The Bible says in Corinthians, "To take every thought captive to the obedience of Christ." So the devil wants me to think that it's okay to hate. And so a lot of times I'll have hatred running through my mind, or bigotry, or prejudice, or resentment, or pride, or, hey, I'm smarter than that guy over there, that guy's an idiot. And so Jesus says, "Take your thoughts captive." Because I will either have the mind of Christ or the mind of Antichrist. So the fact that the mark is on the forehead is also an indication that they will have, or we will choose the mind of the Antichrist. So I don't necessarily think the Antichrist is gonna show up with six-six-six on his forehead, but he will show up with a marking that identifies himself, not just as a person, but identifies his belief system, his governmental system, his religious system, his, his mind. So we'll either have the mind of Christ or the mind of Antichrist. And that is already attacking us today. So we also sometimes when we read this, think, oh, one day the mark will come. The marking's already here. And it's just not, it's not just the, you know, uh, Charles Manson's of the world that put a Nazi swastika on our forehead. That's not the marking. The marking is, what's your mindset? So when we talk about the mark of the beast, or the name of the beast, or the number of the beast, these are all identifications of the beast. So, um, let me, let me say this about the hand, or on their, on their hand. The hand represents what you do, your actions. So the Bible says, "We're the body of Christ," that we're the hands and feet of Christ. So if I use my hands to heal people, I'm doing what Jesus Christ would do. If I use my hands to feed people, I'm doing what Jesus Christ would do. If I use my hands to build for the kingdom of God, or to, um, work for God, then I'm using my hands appropriately. But if I use my hands to punch, molest, steal, um, uh, hurt and harm and abuse, then I'm using my hands, I have the mark of the beast on my actions. I have the name of the beast on my actions. I have the mindset and the action of the beast or the Antichrist system. So when we read these markings, don't just associate it with this six-six-six on the forehead or the hand, but associate it with the mind of Christ versus the mind of Antichrist. The works of Christ, or the works of perdition, foolishness, sin, arrogance, pride, the work of the flesh. So these are, these are two identifiers. Before we, you know, run off of this topic, there's a lot of people that say, well, you know, when Hitler branded the Jews, uh, that he marked them, that was the mark of the beast. And he would, he would, um, tattoo or brand all the Jews with their own identification number. And there are Jews alive today that still have those brands, uh, or those markings on their physical bodies. Um, some people say, you know, listen, man, I'm not gonna go to the hospital ever and let them put me under because they're gonna insert a RFID chip underneath my skin and, um, or barcode me, or they're gonna, you know, track me with this dental implant. And those are all marks of the beast. Those are all, you know, don't take the RFID chip and, and don't take that mark because then you'll be, you know, bound to the devil forever and unsaved. Let me just remind us. Although I don't think it's wise to be tracked, I don't think it's wise to go insert RFID chips. You know, they'll be sold to us for, for safety purposes, you know, like we track your dog. Uh, if your dog ever gets lost, you know, they'll, they'll sell us on the safety of our children or the safety, if, you know, what would happen if you were kidnapped or something like that. They'll, they'll sell it for convenience reasons. Hey, listen, this is how you'll be able to buy from here on out. This will be your, your social number, nobody will be able to steal your ID. All that's coming, we know that's coming. Um, the, uh, just, and it's coming fast. But before we think that the mark is a personal ID number, that's not true. So the fact that each Jew had a different number, four-seven-three-two-nine-four-seven, well, that was different than three-two-nine-four-seven-six. So the Jews had personal identification numbers. RFID chips and these implants and this idea, those are personal identification numbers, even like a social number or a government ID number. The mark of the beast is his mark. So it strips you of your identity and you no longer identify to self, you identify to him. So the mark of the beast can't be forced upon you either. So if somebody sedates you and puts you under and gives you a chip or, or tattoos six-six-six on your forehead, or gives you a barcode on your fore, on your, on your wrist and, well, listen, I can't force you to worship God and I can't force you to worship Satan. You choose that. Now, the Bible is clear. You can't on the inside say, "I worship Jesus," but on the outside, take the mark. The two don't mix. You'll either take a stand for Christ, or you won't. So don't be in fear that the mark of the beast is something that can be forced upon you. Just remember, it's something you'll choose. You'll either choose to do it or not to do it. But I really want to emphasize this. The bigger concern for me is the people that take the mark of the beast, they will have already chosen the mindset of the beast and the actions of the beast. It's not like, you know, tomorrow Satan's gonna show up with the Antichrist and say, hey, are you good Christians and gotta take the mark tomorrow? There'll be, you know, that's what, that's what we see in the movies. So we see, you know, four hundred Christians going to the guillotine. And it's good for entertainment purposes, but it's not necessarily what the biblical message is. The danger is the mindset that wants to take the mark, the mindset that says, "I need to associate with the name." The not, the mindset that says, "I better just associate with the number for survival." Those mindsets are already here. They're already taking root. The actions of the beast are already being taught to our hands. That's why Christ says, "Listen, what you put your hands to, if you want to come to me, you have to have clean hands." Not, you know, "I got clean hands because I went to Rudy's and got the sticker." Clean hands because my actions are holy, not unholy. So people that will take the mark of the beast are already thinking like the beast. They're already processing like the beast. They're already acting like the beast. They're already succumbing to it. That's why today, we have to choose, you know what? I'm not gonna identify with Satan's culture today. So I will turn that TV show off. I am not going to identify with the mindset of Satan today. So I'm gonna forgive that person that abused me. I don't have to be their friend. I don't have to be in relationship with them. But I will forgive them. Because I will bless those that curse me. I will turn the other cheek. That's the mindset of Christ. The mindset of the Antichrist is, hey, do whatever you want, as long as you're not hurting people. That's not biblical, that's, that's Antichrist biblical. So the mindset of the beast is already the precursor to the mark of the beast. The, the mark on the, on the hand is the precursor to what we're doing. So we really have to analyze, are we already, have we already taken the mark? The scariest, um, you'll always have your fanatics, you'll always have your charismatic followers. But I think the scarier one is the one that's the more the temptation, and that's identifying with the name of the beast. Um, and that's not just worshiping false deities, which that would be identifying with the name of the beast. But I think a lot of people will identify with the name basically just to survive, to keep their job, to keep their lifestyle, to keep, uh, things from rocking the boat, to be politically correct, if you will. So look at this at the end of thirteen and don't just skim over that going, oh, that's just something crazy that's gonna happen one day. It is happening. You gotta hear that. It's happening. It's already happening. Okay, chapter fourteen, let's dive in. Chapter one, um, it's pretty cool. Let me, let me summarize this real quick. Chapters eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen are some summary and they're giving us um, kind of like role descriptions. They're giving us insight, um, it's kind of like the Cliff Notes to the book of Revelation. So we gotta remember that just because it's chapter one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, all the way up to twenty-two, doesn't necessarily mean that those are gonna happen after this chapter, this is gonna happen this chapter, this chapter. There's breaks and pauses. Chuck Missler calls this a parenthetical parentheses, a pause. It's a pause between the sixth trumpet and the seventh trumpet. Now, let's just recap real quick. The seals from the scrolls, the scrolls being opened, the seals represent time periods. The four horsemen of the apocalypse are already here. They've been here and they will be here. So John in chapter one, uh, seventeen or nineteen, it says, "Write down what you have seen, what you are seeing, and what you will see, or what is to come." So we gotta remember, Revelation is a panoramic view. So some things are viewed from past tense, some are present, some are future. So when we get to chapter fourteen, we're gonna hear about the hundred-and-forty-four thousand again that we heard in chapter seven, and then we're gonna be introduced to three more angels. Now, after this, in the next couple of chapters, we're gonna get to the bold judgments. Now, the seals indicate a time period. The trumpets, the seven trumpets are announcing to the world, doo-doo-doo, the king is coming, or doo-doo-doo, the enemy's marching in, or doo-doo-doo, be aware, broadcast. It's kind of like the nightly news, da-da-da, 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 you know, and then all of a sudden, it's time for the news. It's, you know, breaking news story right now, or in five days, your taxes are due. Or, so the trumpets are indicating something that is happening and is going to happen. And it's giving us a warning. This coronavirus thing that has shut down the world globally, which is really ironic, um, it's the first global impact that I've seen in my lifetime. Everything else has been regional, I've talked about that a bunch. But this coronavirus is a trumpet to us. I'm telling you, it's a trumpet. God's announcing to you, hey, listen, this may be the dress rehearsal, but the real thing's coming. So are you ready? Are you, are you wasting time? Are you wasting time? Or do you need to get some things in order? So we gotta remember, seals represent time periods. Trumpets represent announcements of the king and announcements of the enemy, announcements of mandates or edicts from the throne. It's announcing, hey, you got two weeks, you know, Joshua told the Israelites, you got three days to prepare to cross the Jordan. God's giving us a fair warning. He's, he's firing something across the bow. He's saying, hey, listen, it's coming. If you'll have eyes to see it. If you don't have eyes, if your spiritual eyes are blind, you're just gonna go, oh, this is stupid. God ain't, God's never coming back in my lifetime, I'm gonna do whatever I want to do. Telling you, get ready. So we get to chapter fourteen, the hundred-and-forty-four thousand are back on the scene. Um, so look at, uh, chap, chapter fourteen and look at verse one. "Then I looked, and there before me was the Lamb." Who's the Lamb? Jesus Christ. Standing on Mount Zion. Dude, not, not the hill of Galgatha, Mount Zion. And with him, a hundred-and-forty-four thousand, whose name, listen to this, and here's the mark versus the seal. Hundred-and-forty-four thousand who had his name, whose name? The Lamb's name. Who's the Lamb? Jesus. These are gonna be Jews, a hundred-and-forty-four thousand Jews that turn and believe in Jesus. Today, a Jew that is, um, a Jewish man or woman who is not a believer in Christ practices Judaism. And in Judaism, they don't believe Jesus is the Messiah. These hundred-and-forty-four thousand will get saved and receive Jesus. So on them is the name of the Lamb, Jesus, and his father, Jehovah. So these will be Jewish men and women by, and probably men, but they will be Jewish people that, um, are Jewish by culture, Jewish by religious tradition, but have now received Yeshua HaMashiach, Jesus, the Christ, the Lamb. And they'll have both names on them. So the people following the devil, they'll have the devil's name. These guys are gonna have Jesus and God's name. And that is, that is just, I just want that. I so want God's name written on me. I so want when people to see me, that they see God. And that's what's happening here. Not that we're gods, but they just see the love of God that's changed a wretch like me into somebody that could Not that we're gods, but they just see the love of God that's changed a wretch like me into somebody that could be used for his glory. I heard a sound from heaven like rushing waters and a loud peal of thunder. I, then I heard a sound like that of harpist playing harps and they sang a new song before the throne. Before the four living creatures and the elders, nobody could learn the song except a hundred and forty-four thousand. This is not like a secret tune. This is, this is the song, this is the life, this is what's chosen for these special people. Um, those who did, uh, so no one can learn the song except the hundred and forty-four thousand who had been redeemed from the earth. These are those who did not defile themselves with women, for they remained virgins. They followed the lamb wherever he goes, they purchased, they were purchased from among mankind's as a first fruit offering to God. No lie, in the lamb, no lie was found in their mouths, for they are blameless. When it says that they have the seal of God, they have the name of Jesus and Jehovah on them. Jesus is God. He's the son of God, cuz he identifies with us. But Jesus is God. So we have to grasp that. Every other world religion denies it. That's what sets Jesus apart. He said, I am the way, not a way. I am the life, not a life. And I am the truth. That's the kicker that is so hard to digest, not a truth. When it, when it says that these hundred and forty-four thousand were virgins. That's not just virgin in the physical, physicality that they've not slept with a woman. But they've not sold themselves as a harlot to follow another lover. That's what Jesus so many times, the Bible so many times refers to. Is that when we follow another lover, we're committing adultery, we're like a whore, we're like a harlot. And so are they physical virgins? Most likely yes, they've kept themselves preserved for the Lord. But they've also not corrupted their spirit. And that's what it's talking about. Verse six, look at this, I saw another angel flying in midair. And he had the eternal gospel to proclaim to those who live on the earth. Now, listen to this, there's an angel in the air. John sees this angel, this angel's proclaiming. How long has the gospel been being proclaimed? Since Jesus rose from the grave. So this angel's announcing something that has happened? Is the gospel being preached today? Yes, it is. It is happening, but will it be preached? Yes, this is a, this is an angel announcing, hey, listen. The same gospel Jesus preached is the same gospel being preached today, it's the same that will be preached. It's still time to get in, in, in with Christ, it's still time to get in the ark, if you will. Um, he said. Fear God, here's the gospel. Fear God and give him glory because the hour of his judgment has come. Now, this angel, when he appears in the revelation, in the future, i- i- in this revelation time period, he's gonna say, listen, fear God. Some of us fear what other people think, that's why we don't turn to God. Some of us are more concerned that our friends will think we're a freak if we follow Jesus. And don't fear your friends. If they're really your friends, they're gonna love you. If they're not, then they weren't your friend. Don't fear what man thinks. Fear what God thinks. Fear him, give him glory because the hour of his judgment has come. Worship him who made the heavens, this is an interesting point. Worship him who made the heavens, the earth, the sea and the springs of water. It's all creation minded. God's saying quit following. Man's idea of how the earth was formed and shaped and. And evolved and follow God's. Mandate and truth and scripture who says, I created this thing. So we see this angel flying, declaring the day of judgment. In verse eight, we see a second angel declaring this, I love it. Fallen fallen is Babylon the great, which made all the nations drink the maddening wines of her adulteries. The second angel is declaring the fall of Babylon. The great, now Babylon the great, we haven't really got to, I kept calling it the beast system. The beast government. The beast government, the Bible calls Babylon. Babylon gets its name from Nimrod's first, uh, Antichrist kingdom called Babel. Babylon also means confusion and chaos, it's where the devil rules and reigns. The devil is full of chaos and witchcraft and foolishness and slavery. So Babylon the great, this angel announces the fall of Satan's earthly kingdom. Now, that kingdom is already here. The, 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 um, bylaws of that kingdom have already been established, the constitutional, uh, um, articles of incorporation, they've already been mandated. There's been some, some of those leaked out of like the UN back in the fifties and forties, like with this world, new world order mandate, this Illuminati thing. All those things are true because they come from this Antichrist theology, that mindset, the mark of the beast. But what this is saying is Babylon, the city is fallen. And all the nations drink the wine of her adulteries. Now, what that means is that the world at this time. And the system that's already in place now, and I'm not going just conspiratorial like, but I'm talking about Satan's governmental mindset. It's already here. This angel is declaring what Jesus, hey, that, that's fallen. I love the word fallen. Angels that rebelled against God are fallen. This is Lucifer's city. And it's fallen, it's failed. It may exist, it may build great buildings and, and harm a lot, but it's fallen, it's failed, this angel's proclaiming. So Jesus proclaimed it on the cross, it is finished. We're proclaiming it, the word of God's proclaiming it today. This angel's proclaiming it. So it has happened, it is happening and it will happen. Babylon is the beast system. Uh, the beast, this, this system gets people to worship the dragon. And Satan with its adultery, that adultery there means fornication with other gods, other lovers. Other, somebody else, and, and in this case, it's that we'll love that, that, that system and the beast, not Jesus. Um. People will love the beast, the dragon, the city and the system, it will seem to be. It will seem to be. Establishing a world of peace and prosperity, but it will really be death and despair. The third angel with a loud voice, uh, repeats the mark of the beast, it's pretty interesting. These, these next few verses are almost saying the same thing that the end of chapter thirteen said. So I won't reiterate a lot of it, but the third angel followed it said, if anyone worships a beast, its image and receives its mark. On their forehead or on their hand, they too will drink the wine of God's fury. Which has been poured out full strength. They will be tormented, listen to this. People that accept that will be tormented with burning sulfur. In the presence of the holy angels and the lamb, and the smoke of their torment will rise forever and ever, there will be no rest there. I remember in seventh grade on MTV when it first came out, there was a song by a band, I, I don't even know. Why this stuck in my brain, but it was, the band's name was Grim Reaper. And the song that they sang was, see you in hell, my friend. And I remember listening to that as a seventh grader cuz I was into rock and stuff, but, but, uh, and, and a lot of other weird stuff, but. Um, the song lyrics was, see you in hell, my friend, see you in hell, my friend, so I thought, wow, man. I guess, I guess hell's where the party's at. There is no party in hell. There's no friends in hell. There's no seeing people in hell. You think this is social distancing? The Bible describes hell as dark, alone, forsaken. It's a land of torment. There's no party in hell. There's no reunion in hell. The parties in heaven, the reunions in heaven, see you in heaven, my friend, I'll see my friends in heaven. I'll see my friend David Click again in heaven one day. I'll see my friends in heaven. And I pray that I'll see all of them there. Amen? That's my prayer. So, let's go, I'm, I'm getting off mark, here we go. And the smoke of their torment will rise forever and ever. Listen, if you receive the mark in your thoughts and actions. If you receive Satan's agenda in your thoughts and your actions. You're in jeopardy of taking the mark. You gotta really let the word of God analyze that. Hell is real. Let me say this, hell is real, it's a real place and it's under the earth. It's in the earth, the Bible clearly states that. Heaven is above, hell is beneath. The gate to hell is hidden right now. But we've already talked about the angel that goes to the bottomless pit with the key. There is a physical doorway to hell on this earth. Oh, well, we got GPS and global mapping, how can you say that? Listen, there is a physical door. To the Garden of Eden that's here on this earth, we've not discovered it and we never will. Because the Bible says he posts an angel with a flaming sword in front of it to prevent it. There's also a gate to hell. We're not gonna find it. But one day it will be opened. These are real places, don't, please don't let evolution tell you. That those are way in outer space at some, you know, great black hole out there and, and heaven's fourteen billion. Light years away, that is, that is Darwinism seeking in, or, or seeping into the word of God. If you and I were, were, uh, lived in the year of fifty A.D. and we read the word of God. That mentality would not creep in. It's a demonic system to get us to not believe in the physicality of hell or heaven. Hell is a real place. Hell is, uh, heaven is made for the physical body. When you die here, this physical body that I inhabit. It's my identity, it's how you can recognize me, it, 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 it summarizes my character and personality. But it's a fallen body. So when I breathe my last, I'll get a new body that will look. Just like this, but it will be perfect in form. I know I can't get much more perfect than I already am, but it's coming, just get ready for the real show, just joking. Uh. The physical body is made for heaven. Heaven will be a physical place. But with a spiritual eternity. If Adam and Eve had never sinned, they would still be alive today. We have to grasp that. If Adam and Eve had never eaten the fruit, they would still be alive today. When you die and go to hell, you inhabit a new eternal body also. So in heaven, there's eternal bodies, in hell, there's eternal bodies. But in hell, the body is never consumed. Because it's all of a sudden eternal. As painful as it would be to catch on fire in the physical. Some of you have suffered fire and, and it was a tragic event. As, as difficult as it would be to be quote unquote burned at the stake today. In the physical, it would be excruciating flames of fire and pain for a small amount of time. Maybe five to eight minutes. And at some point, your nerve endings would, would cease to feel, they would be consumed. And your body, the pain would be out when you, when you die. In hell, your eternal body is never consumed. So it would be what makes hell. Absence of God, it's absence of light, it's absent of peace, it's appen- absent of joy, there is no fun in hell. There's no reunion, there's no party, there's no crack cocaine, there's no sex, all the sex you want, there's no, uh, bad joke, there. No, hell is the absence of anything holy, good, purposeful, there's no purpose in hell. There's no future in hell. But when it talks about hell. It's the eternal burning of the body. The pain never stops. The opposite is, is in heaven. It's interesting, only forty, only forty-six, uh, let me rephrase it, forty-six percent of Americans do not believe in hell. And the crazy part is a lot of those call themselves evangelical Christians. Twenty percent of evangelical Christians question, is heaven a real place? We'll talk more about that next week in our, in our study of heaven. Let's keep going, verse fourteen, and this is where I wanna end tonight. Uh, and, and I wanna talk about Israel, so I appreciate your patience as we got here. I wanna talk about the battle of Armageddon. Verse fourteen, I looked and there stood before me a white cloud and seated on the cloud was one like the son of man. That's Jesus Christ. He has a crown of gold on his head and a sharp sickle in his hand. Then another angel came out of the temple and in a loud voice cried to him on the cloud, take your sickle. And reap because the time of the reaping has come, for the harvest of the earth is ripe. Listen. Jesus is gonna come back, not in a manger, not as a baby. He's coming back to reap. What he has sown. The word of God has been preached to you. Over and over and over. The question is, have you allowed it to plant in your heart and your mind and grow in you and change you? Have you allowed the word of God to land so that when Jesus comes back to reap his harvest? You will be part of the harvest. See, the Bible says that when Jesus comes to reap the earth. Some will be wheat and some will be shap. Some will be thorns and some will be good, uh, plants or good seed, good, uh, produce. This is the harvesting of the earth, this is judgment. If Jesus, if you stood before. And he, and he analyzed your heart. Would he find in it corruption? Or redemption? Holiness? What would he find there? If he analyzed all your language for the last twenty-four hours, would he find cursing? I don't mean cuss words. What do you find cursing? Damn you. Uh, I hate, listen, we don't damn anybody. Take that out of your vocabulary. We don't curse people, we bless people. So when Jesus comes back to reap the harvest. He is bringing judgment. Now, here's, here's what's gonna happen. I want you to read Luke chapter eight, it's the parable of the sower. And Jesus throws some seed out and the word of God is preaching, some, some falls on the, on the wayside, on the roadside. And it says, birds come and eat it. Some seed that is sown out falls on a hard soil and it only can go two or three inches deep, so it springs up. But because it's not nourished and watered, it dies out. Other seeds that are planted in this parable, um, uh, are planted among thorns and as it, as it starts to grow, something else chokes it out. And then it says, some seed is planted on good soil and as it grows, it produces a hundred, uh, a hundred times its, its, uh, ability in produce. Listen, when you read that parable, we gotta realize mathematically, only twenty-five percent. Of the seeds plant on good soil. So as a preacher, I've understood this concept and it's scary because I realized that. When the word of God is spoken, it's like seeds going out. And unfortunately, if there's a hundred people in the audience that day, maybe only twenty-five people will allow the word of God to plant. It's scary because this is a percentage parable. So if you think back of all the words God's spoken to you, how much have you allowed to plant and change you? Or how many times did, did you get a word from the Lord and you go straight outside and the devil tells you, nah, God's not gonna do that for you? And so that seed was stolen by a bird from the air, a demon. It's what the birds represent are demons. What, have you, have you been in a sermon and you heard the word of God and you said, God's gonna heal my body? And then you get out and the doctor says, oh, man, the cancer's growing. And you're like, oh, uh. See, the word. Is what's gonna grow in us. So Jesus is coming back to judge the earth. Here's the battle of Armageddon. The battle of Armageddon will be the end time war for the invasion of Israel. Now, if you need, on your notes, if you, if you need notes, go to our website, Whitestone Church TX. Go to the contact us, drop down, give us your at email, we'll send you the notes. On, on the bottom of your notes tonight. I've got three pictures, so I wanna talk about Israel as a nation and we'll, we'll start tonight, we'll pick back up on this. In more detail tomorrow night because what we've gotta understand is Jesus is coming back for his people. And when I say his people, I do mean Christians, Gentile Christians, American Christians. But he's coming back for the Jewish nation. He's coming back to rule and reign in Israel. In Jesus's earthly throne, he'll set up his kingdom in Israel, we have to understand. In Jesus's earthly throne, he'll set up his kingdom in Israel. We have to understand that. He won't set up in Washington DC at the White House, or, or, uh, you know, um, somewhere else. He'll set up in Jerusalem on his mount, and it will be his temple. And it won't be the temple they build, it won't be the temple that man builds, it'll be a temple that comes down from heaven, we'll talk more about that later, it's, it's cool. But on your map, there is a pre nineteen forty-eight map. Um, and so in nineteen, well, there's a map, uh, repres- I'm sorry, ref- referencing nineteen forty-eight. Israel became a nation on May the eighteenth, May the fifteenth, nineteen forty-eight. And May the fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight, sorry. And when they became a nation, they were bordered by Egypt, Jordan, and Syria, and then the sea. And, and so if you look at your first map there, you'll see the territory where West Bank and the Gaza Strip, which are very, uh, popular lingo in our day and age. They did not have those two cities or those two pieces of land. When they became a nation in forty-eight, God brought all the Jews back that were scattered abroad from across the earth. This is a huge prophetic fulfillment. So he brings them back to Israel. He brings them back to their homeland, the promised land. This is the land flowing with milk and honey. This is the land they crossed the Jordan to get to. This is the land that they left Egypt to get to. The promised land is God's chosen territory for the Jewish people, the nation of Israel. So for almost twenty years, the nation of Israel lived in this land. Now, day one, they were attacked by the Arab nations, and they defeated them miraculously. And then about nineteen to twenty years later, in, in June of nineteen sixty-seven, Israel was invaded. So they were invaded Jordan and Syria, so they were invaded from, from the bottom, the middle, and the top, I mean, from all sides and, and, and the sea is on the other side, so they didn't have anywhere to go. It would be the equivalent of the United States attacking, not the state of Kansas, but the city, Kansas City, attacking, attacking the, the, the middle of, of America and, and all the, the states decided, we want that territory, we wanna kill them, we're gonna all of the US attacking, uh, uh, California, or a strip of California. This was a, a battle that in the natural should have been simple. But in nineteen sixty-seven, it was called the Six Day War. And Israel defended itself and defeated Egypt in a humiliating destruction of all of their armed forces. In five hours, they destroyed over two hundred and forty of the like two hundred and eighty aircraft that Egypt owned. They decimated them. They went and protected and took back Jerusalem and the West Bank from Jordan. And then they went and they defended themselves against Syria, their, their worst enemy, their, the, the, the hardest, um, army to defeat. And in that, after the Six Day War, they gained property, because Egypt invaded them, so they get, they took back the, the Sinai Peninsula. They took back the Gaza Strip, they took back West Bank from Jordan. They captured more land to give themselves a buffer. I'm not here to give you a history lesson, but I'm here to tell you what's gonna happen. Now, at the second coming of Christ, before the second coming of Christ, the Antichrist, for three and a half years, he will attack and do everything to annihilate and exterminate every Jew on the planet. That is his goal. That's his mandate. That's called antisemitism. There's a spirit, there's a demon of antisemitism that is alive today, that wants to permeate our media and our culture and our mentality to change us from supporting Israel to destroying Israel. But when we get to the Battle of Armageddon in end times, we'll see as we continue to study that the Antichrist makes an Arab nation agreement to all invade Israel. And in this Battle of Armageddon, we will see the blood flow, and the attack against God's people is horrendous. So let's look there just briefly tonight, um, in Revelation chapter fourteen, and we'll pick up in verse fourteen. And we'll read through this a little bit tonight, and then we'll pick up here tomorrow night, uh, as we talk about this very serious battle. Verse fourteen, I looked and there before me was a white cloud, seated on the cloud was one like the son of man, with a gold, crown of gold on his head and a sharp sickle in his hand. The angel came out with a loud voice that says, take your sickle, reap, because it's time to reap, for the time of harvest of the earth is ripe. So he was seated on the, on the cloud, swung his sickle over the earth, and the earth was harvested. Now, may not sound much yet, but we'll read some other things. Jesus himself will separate the sheep from the goats. He'll shut, separate the sheep nation from the goat nations. Jesus will reap what he has sown, planted, and nourished. Satan is sowing seeds in the heart of man, nourishing the seeds, and he will reap also. Go back to Genesis where it says, I'll put a seed in the, the woman's seed against the serpent's seed. There's two different seeds coming. That's not just children to be born, but it's also gospel versus anti-gospel. Um, this parallel here is in the parable of Luke chapter eight. Here we go, the Battle of Armageddon, verse seventeen. And another angel came out of the temple in heaven, and he too had a sharp sickle. Still, another angel who had a charge of fire came from the altar and called with a loud voice to him who had the sharp sickle, take your sharp sickle and gather because its grapes are ripe. The angel swung its sickle on the earth, gathered its grapes, and threw them in the great winepress of God's wrath. There were trampled, they were trampled in the winepress outside the city, and blood flowed out of the press rising as high as a horse's bridle and for the distance of sixteen hundred stadia. So I'd like for you to read that yourself before tomorrow night. And I'd like for you to look up on Israel, Israel becoming a nation in the Six Day War. Read about the miracles in the Six Day War. Read about the miracles of, of Israel becoming a nation. After Hitler tried to kill them all, the world gave them their own territory, gave them back the land that God gave Abraham. The Six Day War, the enemy tries to rally all the Arab troops to, to fight against Israel. Israel annihilates all of them with angel armies. So before tomorrow night, do me a favor. Do some studying on Israel. Look at some, look at some, read some articles, look at some, uh, videos, whatever you gotta do. But get ready to discuss the Battle of Armageddon. So the Battle of Armageddon will be this, they were trampled in the winepress outside the city. It will be tragic for the Jew. And blood flowed out of the press rising as high as a horse's bridle and for the distance of sixteen hundred stadia. That distance ironically basically goes from North Israel to South Israel. And that blood flow, the horse's bridle will mean the slaughter of a large amount of people to cause that blood flow. And so read about that, we'll pick back up there tomorrow, Israel becoming a nation in nineteen, uh, forty-eight. And then we're gonna get into the bold judgments in chapters fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Then we will see who the harlot is, we'll see how the beast systems fall. Uh, and then we will do some summary work over the next, uh, two or three nights in wrapping up and, and, and packaging the book of Revelation as a whole, hoping that we would somehow get a idea and, and understanding of what God's saying to us. Thank you so much for joining us, I love you, I bless you in the name of Jesus. God's got a plan for you, he's got a purpose for you. You're strategic. God put you on earth for this time. You're not a product of evolution. You're not a product of biological happenstance from your mom and dad. You are a product designed and appointed by God for this day and for this time. Listen, God's got a call in your life. He's got a call on your life. God's gonna heal you, God's gonna give you wisdom, God's gonna give you direction, and God's giving you clarity of vision. So whether you live twenty-four hours or a hundred more years, serve Jesus Christ and fulfill the purpose for which he created you. Father, bless my friends and bless this time in Jesus's name. Amen. See you tomorrow night, six thirty. God bless you.